Thanks for coming, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any changes or corrections, anything, Paul? Nope, Dan. Ryan?
No.
No? Okay, we've got a couple of things. We're going to add J three Engineers, Sixteenth Street Northwest Extension at Roundabout. We have an update on that. When we remove C one in the mayor's report, appointing Dwayne to the planning commission, delete that. And then we're going to add to the consent agenda. Item A two J is already there, the pay equity compliance report. The certification came in after the agenda came out and that certification certificate's in there, too, that it was in compliance. So we'll add that to that. So with that, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Take the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto the consent agenda. Questions, comments? Anything on the consent agenda? We have the minutes that are in there just to note the last two meetings because the last time we found something in there that needed to be corrected. So those are, those have been corrected. Okay. Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Take the motion.
Thanks, Dan. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto committee report, two thousand twenty-two EDAN report. That is in your packet. Anything to add, Dan?
Uh, no. I think he's got it well detailed in there.
Okay. So thanks, Ian, when you see him, for putting that together. EDA has got a couple of things on their plate for the year, so we'll hopefully be able to update on some of that stuff throughout the year as it takes place and other things are coming up. I think, Tim, you've got a meeting coming up, too, right?
Uh, we've got a couple of meetings coming up.
With Rochester?
With Rochester, yeah. So we'll do that, see, and then it's always interesting, like you're kind of hitting your, getting them to all, but obviously there are a lot of things that the EDA is working on. So they're looking right now at setting priorities for two thousand twenty-three. So that's kind of our next step that we need this year.
Okay. Thank you. Onto GO Business Number One, inclement weather policy. If I have a chance to go through that. Are any questions for Tim or concerns, comments?
Did this change at all since the last time you looked at it?
No, I didn't receive any comments.
Yeah, I mean, you have to have some kind of, something set, so...
I don't know if there's any suggestions to change it, but otherwise I am looking at, looking for some kind of approval from council, so we can...
Does this only apply to City Hall?
Uh, that's correct. The library has a very similar policy already in place that the library boards approved.
That's why I was wondering.
And coordinate with public work staff. You know, sometimes those jobs aren't able to, I mean, if it's snowplowing or something like that, we would, we would have to be on the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, capacity rates.
And this is some information you've seen before, a couple of different sheets. There's some updates to it. So you've got the capacity position for us. Obviously, we're short. You've got the forecast capacity sort of sheet there. It's got information, so the most recent one to come out was the horizon. So there's Lido's Horizon and the S and D Global. Those kind of range from three oh nine for two thousand twenty-three to six ten. And then Compass did do an RFP for us. Well, it wasn't just for us, but they did an RFP in twenty-two to see if they could purchase capacity for the agency itself. Those are the numbers they got. Speaking with some of our purchase, you know, electric purchase powering partners, they're willing to sell us capacity at the five dollar rate. So last year, you'll know, we paid seven twenty. So I am looking at purchasing this year at that, around that number. Obviously, you know, a lower would be better, but the upside, the issue is, of course, that the capacity sales at Cone this year, I think I have my reporters, like eight thirty-nine. So the upside negative for us is a lot bigger than, you know, like so, you know, at three dollars and nine cents, I'm like, well, you know, you could play the market and say, hey, you know, it's going to come in. I think the direction from council last night was to, or last time was to have some surety. So we would probably, I mean, the goal would be for me to try and lock up six, about six megawatts. You know, and I think we can get two from a couple of different cities and possibly one from another one. So that's where it is right now. I am looking at and asking for approval of that capacity rider. And that in part would fund this acquisition of capacity. And that's, that's included in your packet as well. And it's also been, you've seen, you know, you've seen it before. So what we'd be looking at is it'd be about one cent per kilowatt, as long as this is in effect. And it wouldn't take effect until April, when we would start the, you know, the new year with the capacity auction then. So...
Because that's when the prior year is up, the new year is...
Yeah, so this year, you know, up through April, we're locked in at that three oh two. So I mean, we could start it now, but, you know, what we're looking at is starting in April to match with it.
Right.
One thing we don't know is the seasonality of the capacity auctions change because before the price was bid out for a whole year, now it's based on seasons. You know, and so you can see, like, our capacity position in different seasons is lesser, more. You know, and the summertime is when, with, for us, it's air conditioning, was the big demand. You know, we're, we're well short there. You know, you get into winter time and we're only short four point seven, so it's not quite as dramatic. But I think we would lock in the capacity. The nice thing is, is, you know, based on the seasonality price, it's possible we get at five, you know, we might be high, but at least it's locked in. It's also possible we get at five and, and it comes in at eight point three nine, and then, you know, the people in some of the other cities that we bought from may be kicking themselves, they could have made more. But, you know, I think that's, the kind of the benefit to us is we might actually have some capacity in certain seasons that we don't need that could be sold back in the market to offset some of our losses.
Okay.
That'd be a hope, not necessarily, not to make a good backup.
And the riot, the capacity cost rider is rolling with that price, right? We would adjust that based on...
That's right.
Actual costs?
Yep.
Okay.
So this, um, capacity, you got lined up, this is going to cover all of our deficit?
Well, I mean, my goal would be trying to get to as much of that as possible. I mean, it'll be...
So we might still have a little bit buying at market rate?
Might be a little short in the, in the market, just because, um, when I spoke with some of these other cities, they were willing to, if that is all incumbent upon their public utilities commissioner, city council agreeing to it also. I mean, I'm speaking with their general managers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, they're going to share the same information that we're seeing, and they're going to have to make that same, you know, I guess, bet, and for lack of a better word is, you know, that at Cone, they're expecting to come in at eight thirty-nine, but the forecast is three oh nine. So, you know, if I'm a city council owner of a city, I might say, well, you know, we'll just go for it and try and get as much as we can. Or do they want to have that locked in price? So I'm expecting to be able to hit six to seven. I'm not sure they will. But that's my goal. And that would cover us, hopefully, for the vast majority of our needs.
Yeah, so...
Like I said, if we purchased it, you know, in the worst, I mean, in the summer season, we'd be, we might still be a little short.
Yeah.
But then hopefully, what we'd be able to do is we'd be able to sell that capacity back at the market at the Cone price, you know, in the, in the winter season, for example. Because we'd have it for a whole year.
Right.
And we wouldn't need six megawatts the whole time. We'd only need, you know, we don't, we'd just be short four, four point seven.
Yep.
That's the estimated number. So we'd still have a megawatt we could sell back and get that price back from the market itself. So, I mean, it's kind of almost like a hedge, basically, for us.
Yep. Okay. All right, any other questions? Thanks for your work on this, appreciate it.
Yes, well, hopefully it'll go smooth.
Yep.
Well, nobody out of this month vetifies, I'm able to sign something.
Yeah, but we need to approve the rider tonight to move forward, right?
I think we would in either case, just because we're going to have that in place, you know, just to...
That's how we're going to...
Whether we go to Cone or we're able to sign an agreement with someone.
Right.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the capacity cost adjustment rider. I look for a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Administrators' report.
All right. Let's see what we've got here. So a lot of stuff going on at the legislature. It looks like it may be a good year for LGA. The governor's proposal had some additional funding, about thirty million dollars. A big chunk of that does go into the, to the deep metro area, but we would possibly see an increase there. So that's something that's a positive for us. We'll definitely fall on that. I would expect to see something probably by the end of May, for sure we'll see the numbers there. They'll create some spreadsheets, I'll share those with council. EMS committee had a good meeting, a lot of things they talked about. It's interesting to see the different things that are going on. They did complete the switch over for the fire relief, to the SBA from Park McKnight, included correspondences, that report, and I think that if you review that, you'll find it's well justified. The rate of return that they were, they were getting was not, not a very good rate of return. So I think they're going to do much better off with that. Fire Hall project, I don't have any large updates there. We continue to work with USDA and, you know, it's unfortunate the federal government doesn't tend to be the fastest entity. You know, it's not like us local government folks, you know, we're, we're quick on our feet. But, you know, everything has to go to Washington and come back, so I really can't blame the local folks either. It's just, when it's ready to go for bids, it'll be ready to go. We did have a really good Southeast League meeting, I thought was very timely. We talked about cybersecurity. It was very interesting. Lewiston, a local example, that was hacked in two thousand twenty-one and lost, basically would have lost all their data, except for the fact that their utility billing company had tried emailing files out to themselves, and those files were in an outbox of a computer that was, it was sitting there, and they were able to recoup most of their data, at least for utility billing and some of the, they lost a couple of days of data. Otherwise, it really would have been a mess. But it still ended up costing them, they paid sixty thousand dollars, I think it was in a ransom. Didn't get their data unlocked, and they were going to have to pay another ransom. And so, you know, talking with, with Linda and staff, you know, we're fortunate to have a, Mike Bowie was the, from Onsite, was actually the presenter, and he's our, he's our consultant. So I asked him afterwards, are we all right right now? He said, you're doing good. So I feel good about that. But there's no perfect system. We do have certain things compartmentalized. So, for example, the sewer plant, it's completely separate. You know, the, Dave doesn't run on the internet at all, which, it's more manpower intensive because you can't check it from home or anything like that, you've got to be in there in person. But we know that some of those very critical systems, we want to be able to operate those no matter what happens. So, so actually, very interesting. Thank you. We had a couple attendees for Dan's, basically Dan's last meeting as the president, but it was, it was well attended. It was hosted here in Casim, so it's always nice to show off the community. So transportation plan, capacity pricing. Uh, we are tracking this family paid leave bill as well. Potential cost to the city, we anticipate would be approximately one percent, or about forty thousand dollars to the tax levy. Um, the way it would be funded is basically it's a payroll tax, and part of that is paid by the employer, and part of it could be paid by employee wages. We are hoping to be able to show that our own plan would qualify, and so we wouldn't have to be falling under that. So we'll see how that goes, but it sounds like it's very likely to, to be approved in legislature, where things are moving very fast. I did testify yesterday at their hearing, and usually when I've gone in the past, especially early in the cycle, they're, they're not that well attended, the meetings aren't. But because they've been moving legislation so fast, this was, it was well attended because you just never know, they might just pass something in the committee meeting. So it was interesting to testify for them. Then one other highlight would be that the annual work session, right now is scheduled for eight thirty AM on March eighteenth here at City Hall. And we anticipate two and a half, three hour meeting. We don't have quite as much content as last year, so it should be a little shorter. But unless there is some large schedule issues, that's what we're anticipating right now. And I think that's all I've got for tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? Thank you. Onto J, the engineers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, three items tonight. Uh, the first one regarding Highway fifty-seven detour. Uh, in your council packet is a figure, that's a snippet out of the construction plans. Uh, it's just showing, we're asked, ultimately asked MinDOT to post no parking on Fourth Street and Second Avenue. Sounds like a lot of the fifty-seven traffic was diverted to that section roadway here previously, when we had a failure at the railroad crossing. Uh, it sounded like the brewery was pretty popular that night, and there was a lot of traffic parked along that roadway, and it backed up some traffic. So, uh, just foreshadowing for the spring, again, when we shut down the highway and detour, fifty-seven traffic on the detour, we're just asking to provide no parking there, so we don't have the brewery patrons in the, a lot of the traffic in that area. So that's, this is the request, is FYI to the council. Uh, thirty-four will be closed out to the north side of the brewery there. Uh, so now expecting a lot of traffic there, so I suspect that there'll be enough parking along that roadway. So I just more of an FYI for the council, that item that we're working. So I appreciate, uh, staff letting us know that that was an issue, so we can move it forward to MinDOT to provide the solution. So, um, that's just an FYI. Uh, changing gears, the second item, two thousand twenty-three street improvement project. A couple items tonight. We have a request for council action, and then ultimately a resolution calling the hearing on the assessments. Uh, we have a proposed assessment role, and then I do have the project scheduled within the council packet. Uh, so we'll start with the request for council action. Uh, just walk through this at a really high level. Uh, we did bid the project here last Friday, it was. Um, you can see the engineering estimate was about seven hundred ninety-one thousand. Um, lowest bid there was Rochester Sand and Gravel at seven hundred twenty-one thousand, some change. Uh, so it came in pretty significantly less than what we had in a feasibility report. Uh, so you can see the cost there, we're looking at about a million dollar project and an assessment of about twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, lowering the cost down and applying the same principles in the assessment policy that we discussed, that ultimately would lower the project cost to about eight hundred and eight thousand, and then ultimately the, the cost per REU to slightly over two thousand. So you can see a pretty significant, uh, cost reduction there. We do have the proposed assessment role, ultimately lowering that assessment to those different properties, and there's a resolution calling the hearing. Um, if you pass the resolution, we'll have that public hearing here at City Council on March eighth, and then we'll also consider entering in a construction contract at that point. So we're just going to kind of acknowledge these bids and wait till that meeting to likely enter into a contract with the contractor for moving forward. So, uh, with that said, I'll jump into the resolution, calling the hearing on the assessments, and I'll let you know, now I'm going to be looking for two things. One, to set the interest rate that we're going to propose to the citizens, and then also the term. Um, so with that said, I'll jump in, again, resolution, uh, calling the hearing on March eighth. Um, if you pass this resolution, we'll send the two exhibits that are attached to the resolution. The first one goes in the newspaper, ultimately outlining that there is going to be this special assessment hearing, um, the area that's proposed to be assessed, the amount to be assessed. In the term, currently, we have fifteen years in the term. That's been past practice of the city council, but those have been for mainly reconstruction projects that obviously have a higher assessment to the seventy-eight hundred, eighty-two thousand were kind of the typical REU in the past projects. This obviously is a lot less of a cost, so I think the council should provide some direction on if fifteen years is appropriate term or not, or maybe consider reducing that to, say, ten years. Um, and then the second part of that, we're looking for the interest rate. So traditionally, and per the council assessment policy, is one and a half times the prime rate.
Plus, plus.
I'm sorry, yeah, one and a half. One and a half, maybe a, I could increase, but one and a half percent over the prime rate. I understand the primary right now is seven point two five, so one and a half percent would be...
Seven point seven five.
Okay, seven point seven five, so then that would be what?
Nine point two five.
Nine point two five percent is what we'd be looking at, the interest rate if we apply, again, the past practice of the council and the assessment policy. Um, so ultimately, looking for direction on those two items, and then obviously the assessment role. Uh, we have reduced that down per the assessment policy, but open to any comments you may have on there. Um, one other item to note, we did have some correspondence about the townhouses along Second Avenue, um, and if those townhouses should be treated differently. Currently, they're at a one REU. Um, again, that was past practice in the third, fourth, and fifth project. We had some townhouses attached to the property line, sharing a property line. Uh, those were all charged one REU, with the idea that the general concept is a house is a house is a house. We didn't go to frontage. We didn't go to number of, uh, those houses have two car garages, some houses only have one. We just didn't, didn't get to that level, we just figured a house is a house. So we've left that in here. Um, if we proceed with that tonight, you ultimately can, can hear those concerns at the assessment hearing, because they're likely, or they have been formally sent to city, so they'll be in your council packet to hear those concerns at the next hearing on the assessments. Um, but at this point, we left them in there. You're welcome to have a discussion, we can change them if you'd like to change them now, but that, um, staff has ultimately recommended to leave them at as a one. So, um, may I pause there and answer if you have any questions? And again, looking for consideration of the resolution, and then some direction on the term and the interest rate.
Questions, comments for Brennan?
Yeah, so, so you're talking about this list of, these are all duplexes there, but they're on single lots, and they're essentially getting two REU for a single lot because they're two different dwellings?
Uh, yeah, they're two different dwellings, so maybe you take a house, you have a property in between, where you just basically attach the house to the property lines. That's essentially what they have going on there.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the discussion, is if they should be a one or not. Uh, you look at the size of the garage, and they have bigger garages than the other houses, they're relatively the same size, so we just consider them one REU, with the idea that a house is a house is a house. And frontage doesn't really come into play unless you have a large amount of frontage is the, the REU residential equivalent unit.
Okay. I, that seems all right to me. What I'm not understanding, though, is why are all the corner lots only half REUs?
So on a, again, a house, if you're on a corner, uh, you don't get really penalized for being on a, on a corner, and the work that we're doing is only on one corner of the corner lot. There are some corner houses in here that you'll see will have a one REU, because we're working on both sides of the house, with the idea that a future street project, if it comes on the other side of the house that is not being improved on, would also have an assessment. So at the end of the day, if both of the sides of your house get worked on, it would, you'd still be one REU.
And a house is a house is a house.
Yep.
So they should all be ones, whether they're on a corner or not?
Well, then if they, if we're only doing work to one side of that house, then what happens when we do the assessment on the next side of the house?
Then they get assessed again, because they have two roads in their house.
And that would make them two REUs and stuff like that.
Yeah, then that would be two REUs.
And they're only one house. We're only fixing one side of their house.
If we're doing both sides of that house, it's one REU. You'll notice that, I think.
Yeah, but a lot of these corner lots have...
Sixty-two.
More frames than a lot of their neighbors do, and they're only paying half the cost.
That was, that was back in the day, excuse me, when we went to REU, we'd get, went away from footage for that reason, because people would not want a corner lot, they would start selling them, because they're going to get assessed by the foot. So we made each lot a hu, one. So you could have a huge frontage on your corner lot, but you don't have the big backyard. Not all of them do, so we've, the, the concept was that it was making it more fair for anybody that had a house.
Did, did we do the same method on the fifty-seven project? All the corner lots were only half REUs?
Well, it depends. Yeah, it depended on if they had, like, water and sewer services, um, and we did tweak them if they did not have a water and sewer service, because that was built into the additional cost. Um, and then we applied the same principle on third, fourth, and fifth. We had, like, one little lot that had a tiny little driveway, was like a pie-shaped lot.
Yeah.
So we traded that property as one REU, along with his neighbor that had a pretty large, um, corner lot that had one service, one road. Their house is a house, they're in the same neighborhood together, all the assessments were the same. Unless you had a really large lot that, say, the old school, for example, took up almost a whole city block minus our water tower, right? We said, well, what's, what's equivalent? If we were to redevelop that, would it be eight houses on that lot? And I think we charged them, say, six, as six REUs at the time. So it was a little bit of a, when you get into a larger lot in a redevelopment, idea on how much they should be paying for their area, then some of that discussion is kind of brought into the REU discussion.
Hmm. So, back to these townhouses, then. Each one of these buildings is on a single lot, though, right? But they have different owners for each half of the townhouse?
Their, their frontage is almost the same, it, I mean, is about the same, is the same as some of the smaller lots in the project. So if we start talking about frontage, then we need to start having the consideration for the smaller lots in the area. So if you were to detach them, just say you separated them by ten feet, they won't look any different than the other houses along the corridor.
Are any of those townhouses, are, are any of them rented? Like, where they got a single owner that owns both halves? Because then he's paying two REUs and he only owns a single lot.
I think they're all individually owned. Those I don't believe are rented townhomes. Are the ones on second? Well, there's actually a mix in there. There's some that own the lots, and part of that is what they call a common interest community, where the association actually owns all the land around the house, the townhouses themselves. So it's a little bit different.
Right, so they're paying like a lot rent or something, or a...
Yeah, or they own their land.
HOA fee or something.
Yep. But then all the, the common land around the townhouses are common interests. So it's a little bit different than just looking at it from a lot perspective. Um, so to your idea that they would be paying double, there would be two houses there, right? There's two garages, there's two kitchens, there's two, you know, whether or not it's...
Yeah.
I guess in theory, they could own both sides of the house and have a disconnected house, but there's, there's two units there.
Right. But then you could also say if any of these other houses, which maybe they're, they're, none of them are duplexes, but aren't, you know, split in the center townhouses, why wouldn't they be getting paid, paying two REUs? Right?
I understand the question. They don't have an individual pit. What are you saying that, what if somebody's renting a regular house?
Yeah, I mean, there might be houses out there that are split into two apartments, right? Have two kitchens, you know, two...
Very well...
Two dwellings, but they're only getting one REU, I mean, these townhouses, you know, they are connected, they're one building, but they're getting charges as separate REU piece?
They're separate parcels.
Are they separate parcels when they have a common wall?
Yes.
They're all separate parcels.
Okay. As long as they're separate parcels, then I guess that's fine.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I mean, like, for example, like if, if, if I bought both halves of a townhouse, and I went to the county and I said, hey, put my parcels together, because I could, because I own them both, then yeah, it would just be one. But in this case, because they're separate parcels, they're reassessed now. I, I mean, I asked the same question, and part of it was like, what's the difference between a townhouse that's fifteen hundred square feet with a two-car garage and a small house that's fifteen, you know, that's twelve hundred square feet with a, a one-car garage? Like, you know, if anything, that one's bigger.
Yeah.
You know, I understand where you're coming from, the principle of it, definitely.
Yeah, I guess we don't, we don't look at if there's like a, a built-in apartment in that, in the house, just say traditional house. We don't, we don't get to that level.
The other thing to just take a look at was the assessment role from third, fourth, and fifth, which a good example would be the townhomes that are just to the north of the school. In that case, we did charge each one of those one REU as well. So we wanted to remain consistent with our policy as well, so.
Yeah, but there's instances where there's, there's houses that aren't townhouses in town, but are still two units, right?
Right.
I know somewhere on the east side, there's a few houses, maybe on Fifth, where it's, it's two separate apartments, but it's one, one building. I mean, there's obviously two entry doors.
Right.
Right?
They didn't get.
And they would only get assessed for one then.
Because they're one parcel.
Because they're one parcel.
Right.
So, okay.
The other thing to consider in here is, you know, we do have some other non-one REUs in it. I mean, there's a couple threes in there for the senior housing. You know, that was three. The oldest some property there is double-fronted and is pretty large, and that's a three. I mean, you could make arguments to make it even more if you look at, you know, certainly at their frontage or areas. But again, we're trying to come up with something that, at the end of the day, there's still a house, albeit a very big lot. So we applied the same principle that we had on third, fourth, and fifth to some of the properties up by the north park there. The same sort of principle are, we applied to the old school too of, you know, a house is a house is a house, but we do have these larger parcels. There's also a couple of commercial properties on this project, so I guess I'll maybe make a point to them if we're going to, you know, look at the REUs.
And the larger lots, if I remember right correctly, was they could split that and put another house on it.
That, that was the concept, right?
If, if it was a big lot, but you couldn't split it and put a house that's not bigger than it was just one.
Correct.
But if it was able to be split into three parcels, and you could develop two more homes, that's why they were charged that extra.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Paul, anything else? Nope. Okay, so you're looking for an improvement to call the public hearing?
Yep, call a public hearing, and then again, if you wanted to tweak the terms or the rate, because currently we have fifteen years in there in a rate of a half, five and a half percent, and that was just a carryover from the last project. But I just want to acknowledge that, one, this is a smaller assessment amount because it's only a street, and then the interest rate's gone up. So policy would say to add that one and a half percent to the current prime rate.
I think if we're trying to keep consistent with past projects, the policy's been, you know, we've had as a practice for the fifteen years, I think we leave that the same. That gives people the latitude to, to be able to do that if they want to. The interest rate really burns, but that is consistent with everything else. This happened over the last year with interest rates, so one and a half over prime, which is nine and a quarter, which stinks. But that's, that's what interest is now, so that's my recommendation. Any comments or questions from council on that?
Because with the fifteen year, they can always pay it off early.
Yeah, there's no prepayment penalty. They can always pay it off early or a lot of going.
Or pay it in full before.
They can, and then there's a deferral for age and income too, so we passed those before and deferred the assessment, so.
Sure. So all, all those tools would still be available. But my recommendation is we keep it consistent. And in this case, it would be the fifteen years, but nine and a quarter percent would be the interest rate. We set that tonight. And we don't want to wait and set that because they'll probably raise the rates another quarter the next time they meet. So I would say if we have a chance to set it tonight, let's just do that because who the heck knows what, what they're going to do. So with that, any other questions, comments? So with the fifteen years available, it's a nine and a quarter percent at the lower amount of two thousand twenty seventy-seven per REU. And we'll call a public hearing for the next meeting, which is on February twenty Oh, I'm sorry.
March eighth.
March eighth.
March eighth. So I'll look for a, a motion to approve that.
Oh.
Motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Good discussion on that. And did you need some, a second thing from us as well?
A third thing.
A third thing, sorry?
I'm switching gears away from the two thousand three
Okay.
street improvements to our sixteen street northwest extension roundabout.
All right.
So it's the third item in your council packet. It was a later addition in a revision of the agenda tonight. So that is an agreement with the city and the Department of Transportation, MINDOT. Should look pretty familiar. Maybe other than Councilor Johnson, we did approve a very similar agreement with our fifty-seven project that we're constructing currently. Basically lays out responsibilities and cost for the project, which I'm under the understanding is consistent with what we've talked about to the state. Couple of things I will note though, what the city is responsible for, our private utilities, water, sewer, obviously. Any minor lighting, if a bulb goes out or whatnot, that's our responsibility, similar to fifty-seven. Legs of the roundabout, so our east and west legs that are on our sixteen street, we're responsible for plowing those. We're, we're responsible for the landscaping. We've changed the landscaping a little bit. We've put some less maintenance landscaping. So we're not at the mow it every week, so there's some plantings in there and some mulch in there. So that is ultimately a city responsibility. And then maintaining that storm sewer, the storm sewer plugged up and whatnot, they're asking the city to unplug those again, similar to fifty-seven. What's MINDOT responsible for? Their highway, obviously, and if there's any major light hit, so if a, if a structure is hit, that light does, and they come in and replace the light itself. And that's something I'm going to work with. Public work staff and electrical staff, there's some custom lights that we need to make sure that we have a couple extra on. They're going to be consistent with fifty-seven and sixteen street lighting, so we have continuity with our lighting system. So I think that'll be a
Great asset in all that we do, obviously.
So those are maybe the highlights I had in that agreement, and I'll pause there and answer any questions you may have.
The, I just had a discussion with the board today about the roundabout landscaping. So has that all been planned, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. Landscaping for the four, thirty-four roundabout, sorry to jump off. They just wanted to confirm that that intended to be for us.
Yeah, so that's one of the maybe we changed between, we designed the two roundabouts. So thirty-four is going to have this landscaping. I think in that, we talked about it at the staff level and kind of came up with the design. And I think what we're going to be looking at, there's a, MINDOT has a landscape partnership program that if we have a design, then we can ask for funds for them to come in and do some landscaping, like we did it in front of Subway there. Do something similar to that roundabout if the city's interested in pursuing that. So something I'll work with Ian on, and we can talk at a staff level about doing that to make it consistent. So we have some continuity with our roundabout. So it's about fifty-fifty, but I don't know, we just grass the whole thing and mow them weekly or put nice landscaping in. So it's kind of, MINDOT doesn't really care as long as you don't have a big sign in there, so.
I just want confirmation if we have to get any other equipment or anything like that to service it for watering and stuff like that. If we don't need the water, we might have to do something with it. It's grass. If we have a dry spell, we may have to do something with it, but that's going to be the same no matter what. So, okay, thank you.
Is there an issue with the school and Excel with their power stuff? I heard something this morning that there possibly is a easement issue or a right-of-way issue?
I haven't heard that from Excel.
Okay.
Excel has all our documents. They've asked us just recently to provide a different resolution. That is, I think, what we're under the understanding that we've paid them to move these power lines. It's an estimate. It may go up or down, and they're going to be starting that in the next week or two. There's some private utilities that are also relocating as part of the project that we're looking at, maybe going out of the school property. But I've just kind of let that work itself out, specifically KM Telecom, I know is looking at that. I thought that all the other powers going the other side of the road over the QuickTrip side, so I haven't heard anything. Because the other, not only our relocation or the relocation that we're forcing of the transmission line, there's some underbuild that goes to Manorville and Dodge Center that they're relocating as part of kind of a separate project that they've already kind of completed, so.
All right.
No, I know you're right. I did, I did pass on Mark's information to Excel. Yes, you're right. I forgot about that. So they must be looking at something.
Yeah, there's something with the corner there or something. I don't know.
We did keep the sign where it's at, so I think that was their, school's main concern to make sure we get the sign where it's at. So yeah, thanks for reminding me. I forgot that we did pass on Mark's, Mark and JJ's contacts, so.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the construction agreement?
I just point of interest or order. The resolution for your consideration is the last sheet of that document. And it is basically authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute the agreement because it will be modified slightly as the bids come in, and we're going to re-insert the cost in there. So it's approval with the idea that the cost, cost estimate, whatnot is going to go in there after we get, after we get the bids in. So I don't know if that changes anything. We have a capped agreement with MINDOT, so it won't really change anything, but that is technically the resolution you're approving, so.
All right. Any questions now on that? Okay, entertaining motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brandon. Appreciate the update.
That's all I have.
Okay. And first, no, we don't have any attorneys. Kind of, we don't have anything attorney. Okay, any questions on correspondence? Okay, hearing done. We've got a meeting in two weeks, same time, same place. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. And happy birthday to council person, Paris. So, there you go. Got that in on the official record.
Thanks.
Okay, entertaining a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.